11, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the "Live," then on the 2025.03.11 City Council Meeting. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green is not here. Fitch?
Here.
Morel is not here. Alaskowitz?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Seven members present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. Tonight, we will remember Daniel Connerton, he was a professor at MCL. He also worked as a substitute teacher for the North Adams Public Schools. And Kimberly Toman, she was a cook for a period of time at the Drury High School. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, we need a motion on the January 28, 2025 City Council Meeting minutes. Move to accept? A motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the February 11, 2025 City Council Meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on the February 25 City Council Meeting minutes, can we get a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. And can we use the mic in behind the wall, please?
Do I need to switch it on?
No, it's all set.
Hi, I'm Valerie Shields, I'm a North Adams resident.
Got to bring it up a little bit because the mic is only for the TV.
Okay.
We don't have a sound system in here yet.
Thanks. So, I'm Valerie Shields, I'm a North Adams resident. This is a local election year, and water quality has been one of the top three election issues for candidates at public forums during the past decade. So, thank you, Counselor Fitch and Counselor President.
Oh, um... Yeah, it is, it's on the agenda, this Counselor Fitch is a communication. Yeah. Go ahead, continue.
Thank you, okay. So, again, thank you, Counselor Fitch and Counselor President, for enabling tonight's meeting. Agenda to be the first during this administration to focus on a public health issue that concerns at least three water quality issues. Number one, the potentially reduced health of the drinking water. Number two, the water supply system. And number three, the city planning that continues to provide insufficient protection of its main water source, which is the city-owned watershed near Mount Greylock. So, I'm not really sure what's going to be discussed tonight, so I don't want to interject anything more, but if there's something that comes up, I hope I'd be able to ask a question at the end, or is that for another time?
That'll be for another time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Name an address for the record. You can use that one, yes.
My name is Pauline Carr, I'm a North Adams resident. And I also like to thank Counselor Fitch for putting the issue of water safety and quality on the North Adams, on the agenda tonight.
Speak louder, please.
Yes.
Door voice, if you would.
I always have to be reminded, thank you. Okay, so again, thank you, Counselor Fitch, for putting the issue, the topic of water safety and quality, on the agenda. As we all know, the cleanliness and safety of our city water supply, and also the drainage issues also, these are intimately affected, they depend on the health and the canopy cover of our forest, on the watersheds, on the mountains. So, our group, Save Watch First, has been working on this issue towards protection of our watershed for months now, and we hope that we'll have a chance to meet with Counselor Fitch, any other interested counselors, and the mayor, within a few weeks, to discuss how to establish permanent protection on these, for the city watershed, and the livability of the city of North Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. Dick Alkembrake, 40 Williams Street, North Adams. Thank you, Council President, counselors, thank you, mayor. I just want to talk briefly on Communication 100 regarding North Adams Police retirees' working details. I believe in 2010, when I was the mayor, the Hadley Bridge Project was ongoing. Does anybody remember the bridge project?
That could be forgotten.
Typically, the bridge would have four to six officers working traffic detail on any given day, and I often wondered why I rarely saw officers from NAPD. And I spoke at the time with Commissioner Rocko only to find out that many of the officers did not want the detail work. And recognizing that many departments in the region allowed retirees to work, and knowing we had several officers approaching retirement, I worked with the union and we crafted a procedure and agreement whereby retirees from the NAPD could work details, I believe with an age limit of 65. And to my knowledge, this arrangement has worked out well, in that it does not take from the rank and file, and it provides some extra income and purpose to retired officers from the North Adams Police Department. I'll also say that 70 ain't old, now that I'm past it. And I wholeheartedly support the communication with hopes that this NAPD to continue providing coverage until the age of 70. I would also like to very briefly talk about Communication 98 regarding Sullivan School. I think, in 2016, I think we opened Cogrove Elementary, and through the process, one of the mistakes that I made as mayor is that I did not have a good plan for the disposition of Sullivan School Building. I thought for certain that because of its location and condition, it would in a sense market itself. Well, what I left was a problem for Mayor Bernard, and as I speak, I've left a problem for Mayor Maxi. And I painfully read the comments about whether or not the mayor should be entering an agreement with Mass MoCA. And with only about 30 seconds left, I'm guessing, I would simply ask this council to support the mayor and her efforts to get the Sullivan property into the hands of Mass MoCA, so that they may resurrect the property in a way that will be friendly and pleasing to the community and to the neighborhood. And counselors, this is your chance to look past the arguments of the money involved, or whether it will or will not produce tax revenue. Mass MoCA is a valued and trusted partner in this community. Let the mayor work with them to be certain this effort moves forward, and please do not vote on opinions, vote on plans and ideas. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else for open forum? Council Paper Number 12,393-2, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, Continued from the Meeting of February 25, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to postpone till the first meeting in April?
I would prefer the second meeting of April?
I'm sorry, second meeting in April.
Okay.
Second meeting in April, sorry.
Okay.
Second?
I've lost track of what month it is.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Since it's all well and good that we say Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, for us with poor memories or people that aren't in the note, if somebody remind us what that is all about?
That is the removal of the school zone in the area of Sullivan School, and replacing it with a safety zone. And it also eliminates certain parking restrictions. One on...
Well, I understand now, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Thank you. This is something that's been ongoing for a while. What is still the delay on this?
Counsel and on a word back from the Mass DOT.
In regards to which section?
The application of the school zone.
For McCann?
Yes.
For Hodges Crossroad?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Bona? Oh, Counsel Blackmer?
We were also talking about the safety zone, and there's been some discrepancy on not, so it's not, so we would expect to hear from counsel also on the safety zone. There's also been a passing of the torch of the committee, so we're trying to just, and not only that, it doesn't make sense to move each step forward and publish each step, because I think it'll cost us less to publish it all than it would to publish each one separately. So, if we had something, we could just, obviously, we can just eliminate the school zone at Kemp Park, but why pay three times when we've got three or four different issues? Was kind of the thought. And it doesn't seem to be an earth-shattering event, one way or the other.
I think we have more priorities. Counselor Shade?
With that said, if this sale goes through for Sullivan School, is having a school zone there going to affect construction or anything else with the way that's designed? Would we need to get that taken care of before they begin any kind of construction or development? Could that interfere?
Counsel Blackmer?
I would think that, one, by the time we, they start construction, particularly near the road, this is going to be done, this school zone will be gone.
Okay.
But I would, but the safety zone is still going to be important regardless, because there's a park there, and I don't know all the, I have many questions about the Sullivan project that, so, we may not, that might not even move forward, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting of April. We had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Council Paper Number 12,459, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 26, Sections 287 and 292, passed to a second reading at the meeting of February 25, 2025. Since this was not published timely in the paper, we will need to postpone this to the meeting of March 25, 2025.
We also need to get confirmation on what I did there. Move.
Okay. Okay, we also need to get confirmation on the paper in your packages, make sure that is the proper language. Counselor Shade?
Um, motions first.
Yeah, we'll get the motion.
Move to pass to a second reading again and publish as required by law.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Shade?
Yes, so the language does need an update. The words "or" bylaw after ordinance should be stricken, and the words "or town clerk", the words "or town" should be stricken. So, it should say, "The Board of Appeals shall adopt rules not inconsistent with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, strike the words 'or' bylaw, for the conduct of its business and for purposes of this chapter, and shall file a copy of said rules with the city, strike the words 'or town clerk'. And clerk should be at law.
We made that amendment last time, so...
Yeah, we did, yeah.
That was, so this document is incorrect.
Right, so it's just a typo on this document, and it'll be corrected.
And has it been published?
So, this was me adjusting up here while everybody was talking, because I didn't have anything in front of me. So, that's why I'm saying I need to make sure that this is correct.
So, yeah, we did already vote on those changes last time, but the words "or" bylaw and "or town" should be stricken from what's here, and that's what needs to be published.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Counselor Shade?
Once again, for the public, this is an item that is part of MGL, Section, Chapter 40, Section 12. It is a requirement by law, whether it's in ordinance or not, and so it's important to add it to our ordinance so it doesn't get missed, because it's a procedure that we found, that the actual zoning board themselves found, that they were not following. So, we're going to update that and make sure that that's being followed, and make sure that we have it in our ordinances, so it's not missed in the future.
Thank you. Okay, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council Paper Number 12,460, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 20... Article 19, Section 2-108 and 2-109, referred to General Government with a return date of March 11, 2025. Do we have a motion?
General Government?
It did go to General Government, so I, the motion would be probably to pass to a second reading, and still have to open up for discussion here, what happened at the meeting. Second? It's the first time coming back.
Okay. Counsel Alaskowitz, would you like to fill us in on this, please?
So, the General Government Committee did meet on February 18 with a full quorum. This paper is divided into two pieces. 2-108 dealt with conflict of interest, and it was deemed, pretty much the same as we did with the zoning board, that a conflict of interest clause doesn't need to be added into this ordinance, because any elected official or someone appointed to a board or a commission is subject to attending conflict of interest training. I believe it is by yearly, and as I stated in the last meeting, we all, we just all completed it again this year. So, by a vote, a unanimous vote, it was voted on amongst us to not go forward with this
Okay. Counselor Bona?
So, is there a motion on the floor at this moment?
No. That was the point.
Okay, that was, he was giving us an update. Counselor Blackmer?
If there isn't a communication, then usually you make the motion and then get the update. So, there is no motion on that.
All right. So, we need a motion, then?
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Further comments? Counsel Bona?
Yes. So, to be clear, through the chair, to Chairperson Alaskowitz, the, if we pass this, then it's actually not what you, the committee recommends. Basically, the committee recommends to file.
The committee recommended to file.
Okay.
I mean, this is something, a paper that is self-policing. I mean, when it comes to conflict of interest, we don't have the means to know if someone has a conflict when they're getting appointed to a board.
And?
This is something that each individual has to take training on, and we've seen in the past, maybe later on down the road, somebody does have a conflict, but for us, as a council, we don't have the means to vet anybody going to a commission or a board, nor do we have the means to know what their conflict is.
Counsel Bona?
Again, through the chair, also to the chairperson, and it was a two, sort of a two-part meeting with this, and was the second part also no change?
The second part, well, we haven't gotten to that yet. I'd like to finish this one, and move on to the next. And so I can make note to everybody, we do have Attorney Bard here via Zoom for any questions that anyone might have on either one of these two papers.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Shade?
Yes, thank you. The reason why I introduced both of these parts, this revision, I still do believe that the city council should approve of appointments to the Airport Commission based on MGL. I still believe that MGL is important to follow, and anywhere where we can be in step with MGL, we should be. The attorney, the city attorney, has given a different opinion on that, because the charter stays that the mayor can appoint their own appointments to commissions and boards. However, again, in my thought process, back when the charter was written, the Airport Commission did not exist. We didn't have airport commissions. It's this MGL provision that allows us to even have an MGL provision, therefore, we should be following it completely as it's written in MGL. That is my opinion. That is not what's agreed upon by other people. As far as the...
Point of order? We're still on the conflict of interest?
Yes, well, it's all the same ordinance, we're going to vote on that whole thing together, so. As far as conflict of interest, I do believe that an independent commission that has the ability to enter into contracts without approval of a mayor or city council, which the Airport Commission, it's one of the few commissions that does, the members of that commission should be held to a higher standard to serve on the commission. This isn't something that I take lightly. I think it's a very honorable thing to serve on any border commission in the city, and I want to thank anybody who has served on the Airport Commission, who currently is serving. I just want to say thank you for the work that you do, being a part of this city. It's a very honorable thing, it's a time commitment, it's a volunteer position. These people are not paid for their time on boards and commissions. So, it's important to recognize that these members of boards and commissions are our neighbors, are our friends, are people in the community. However, I do think that any kind of border commission that has independence and can sign their own contracts, the members of those commissions should be held to a higher standard of, and yes, we do have conflict of interest laws, but that does not stop us from raising the bar and having a higher standard. So, that was my intent with the language here. After hearing from the city attorney, I think the language should be changed in a different way, and that's something in the future we can pursue or not pursue, depending, but I did agree not to go along with the language that I proposed after speaking with the city attorney. Not much of it is covered in conflict of interest. I think it could be worded a bit better in a different way, that still creates the higher standard of members for people being on that commission. Thank you.
Counsel Blackmer, did you have your hand up?
Well, I guess kind of, because this is, this is two sections of one ordinance. It's one paper. The recommendation of the General Government on the first one is to, so, I guess, so we were going to admit, we were going to change ordinance to what's italicized on this piece of paper.
Correct.
And then, General Government meant and is recommending that we, it looks like the first paragraph is actually already there.
Yeah, it would just add the lang, it would just change some of the language, the second paragraph.
And at this point, my question is that the recommendation, for clarification, of the General Government Committee is to not have that second paragraph. Is that correct?
Correct.
Through to the chair?
Correct.
Okay. And then, we're going to move on to have a discussion about the Part II.
Yes.
So, this is one paper, which we can, if we were going to publish, we could luckily publish it as one thing, but it's two things, and somebody may want to vote on, and this is something, how are we going to do this? They may vote fine on just not having Part II, but they may not agree with the other Part II below, Chapter 2, Section 2.109, 2-109. So, I'm not sure how you want to manage that.
Well, I think if we get a motion from the floor to vote on it as two separate pieces of... Counsel Alaskowitz, what's your thoughts on it?
I just wanted to make sure of one thing, and that is to Counselor Bard, that he could hear everything that's going on right now? That's one thing I should have determined right away. Could you hear us clearly, Counsel Bard?
Mr. Chair, through you, yes, I'm making out, I'd say 90% of it. If there's some part I need to hear that I didn't catch, I'll chime in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel Bona?
Wait over here. One option is we amend, we make a motion to amend and scratch that first part, and then we're, you know, if it feels like more people are okay with filing the first part, I'm just saying, but a motion to amend to eliminate the first suggested changes, or to eliminate that off this, and that way, that just takes that right out, and then, if that passes, that's gone, and then we're just voting on the second section. I don't think we can split this into two votes, like, as is. It's either, it's got to be one vote, and the vote is either we amend and change it, or we vote it down or file the whole thing, you know, so.
Counsel Shade?
Yes, just for clarification, the motion on the table is to pass to a secondary reading and publish as required by law.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Would we like to rescind that, and?
For clarif...
Clerk, go ahead, Counsel Blackmer.
I've been waiting for you to call on me, I'm trying to be really good. Somebody would make a motion to amend it as presented, deleting basically Part II revised, yada, 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 Section 2-108. And then, we would vote, have a discussion on that amendment, and then we would vote on that. And then, we would have a discussion on the whole ordinance as amended, and then we would vote on the ordinance as amended.
Okay. Trying to follow you, but I think I've got you, yes. Counsel Shade?
I make a motion to strike the language from Section 2-108.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel Blackmer?
I want to thank Counsel Shade for doing the work on this. I mean, it doesn't, it's not a bad idea to remind people of the ethics, et cetera, and I do understand the, we're such, we're a smaller community, it's hard to find someone with a needed experience that doesn't have a relationship somehow with a airport. I do think the Airport Commission needs to be much more cognizant. If somebody, somebody not only, and you've seen us do it in the city council chambers, if somebody is going to abstain, they need to abstain not just from the vote, they need to abstain from the discussion, and they literally should remove themselves from the table and sometimes the room. Also, if their organization has something that's being presented before the Airport Commission, then someone else from that organization, not the Airport Commission member, needs to present not that person, that person should not be discussing it, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's the frustration that some of us have found, that we kind of wanted to put, agree with a reminder in there, but I will go along with the motion since Counsel Shade made it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel Bona?
Yep, first, for clarification, right now, we're taking this, we're eliminating that first section.
Correct.
So, that's if we go with the amendment, this is not the final vote, that's, which is what the recommendation was from...
Correct.
...the committee. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to eliminate the first Section 2-108. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. On to the main motion. Okay. Counsel Bona?
Through the chair, so to clarify with the chairperson, the second section, how did the committee review that?
So, Section 2-109 was pretty lengthy conversation with Attorney Bard from the city solicitor's office. There were seven counselors present, three, of course, on the committee. So, it was recommended by a vote of two to one to not go forward, to go along with the city council is not needed for final approval to airport commission members. One of the biggest questions during that time was securing grant assurances through the airport, and we found out through opinion through Attorney Bard, that without needing counsel for final approval, it will not hurt any grant assurances. And everybody got a letter in their pack tonight, and I did send the, I did forward the email to all of you.
Okay, do you have any questions for Attorney Bard, or does anybody have any questions for the attorney while we have them? Counsel Bona?
Yeah, so I just want to thank Attorney Bard for the response. You know, I think some of the questions came up of why things were, you know, changed from what it seemed a few years ago, and I think his explanation was fair, and I think it helps us, because it really was a legal question, and, you know, we needed a legal opinion. That being said, I am okay with, as it stands, of not supporting this motion, because, you know, we could then start deciding which boards and commissions do we want to start having a point. I understand Counselor Shade of why she feels the Airport Commission is different. However... However, probably if you start asking me opinions on the airport, I'll be saying to put a for sale sign up on it, but, and eliminate all these problems altogether. But, that being said, I will go along with the recommendation of the committee, vote against this to keep it as-is.
Okay, Counsel Shade?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate again. I want to thank Attorney Bard for taking the time to explain the position and the hometown rule situation with the charter versus MGL. However, I still believe that this commission was set up under MGL, and we should, as a community, as a city, follow MGL to the letter of the law when it comes to this commission. They're the ones that give us permission to have an airport commission, and the Airport Commission did not exist before the charter was written. So, to me, that's a no-brainer, but even if the council weren't to pass this, I know the mayor doesn't agree, and it wouldn't go through. So, that's where we stand.
Okay. Counselor Fitch?
Certainly.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to say that I agree with Counsel Shade on this, and I'll be voting with Counsel Shade on this. I do believe that it's important for us to have oversight over these appointments. I do believe that we are following MGL in doing so. And Counselor, excuse me, Solicitor Bard, I also value your opinion, of course, but, you know, Solicitor Bard's opinion is the opinion of one attorney. We haven't spoken to multiple attorneys, and that's fine, I'm not suggesting that we do. But we're taking an opinion and treating that as fact, and I don't think that's something that we have to do.
Hey, Council Blackmer?
I was just going to say that I agree with Counsel Shade and Counsel, now Counsel Fitch. This commit, like, the, like entering into contracts and some of the things she's listed over this discussion over the last few meetings, I think it's important. And I'm not sure why there's a reticence to have us approve things. I guess, I know that under Mayor Alkenbry, who, former Mayor Alkenbry, who left and we approved appointments, and we did the same thing under Mayor Bernard, former Mayor Bernard, so I'm not sure what the reticence is. And I find it disappointing that we don't have... I know we're a strong mayor, formal government, but these things are important, and I think there should be another set of eyes on it. One that's, another set of eyes that's held accountable to the voters.
Mayor Maxi?
I just want to make sure the council's all set. You know, go ahead, Counsel Shade.
Go ahead.
Okay. You know, part of how this all started was a whole bunch of rhetoric around an appointment that started on the floor. And I will be honest to say to you, I put my back up because I don't have to have you approve these, and I knew that kind of in my gut. You asked for an opinion of the city solicitor, that's what we got. I'm still bringing people forward to inform you, to try to be as transparent as possible, but nine times out of ten, almost ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you approve them anyways. So, while I understand, we asked for a ruling, and our own city solicitor, whether you like it or not, gave his opinion, that's what we hire him to do. If you want me to screen ten other attorneys and ask their opinion, we can do that, but we may get altering opinions. But we've hired KP Law, we use them regularly, we've all said a different amount of times how experienced they are with municipalities. So, this council, through the General Government Committee, asked for two opinions. We got them, and that's where we're at, folks. I don't want to block you, I want to be a partner with you, as I hope that all of you want to be a partner with me, but this was a power play that started on the council floor. And you asked for an opinion, and I got it.
Counsel Shade, you had a question?
I was just going to, yes, thank you. I was just going to say, again, my intention with this was never targeted at any particular mayor, and I appreciate Mayor Maxi being willing to work with us. In the past, has set the precedence of bringing forward appointments for confirmation, and that is a precedent I think it's dangerous to change. I think that, you know, that precedent started that appointments to boards and commissions were brought forward for council approval. I think it's important to keep that. I also understand why Mayor Maxi pulled the plug on it after the conversation around a commission appointment. The conversation turned into topics that weren't on the agenda, and it got a little crazy, and it was inappropriate to target an individual for an appointment in the manner that was, the questions were targeted. They shouldn't have been, it was done incorrectly, and it was a wrong process. And to that person who, who that paper was done rescinded for, I apologize to you for that happening. The way that those questions were asked were not the way that things, you know, asking questions about the Airport Commission is not supposed to be done during a confirmation of an appointment. That's not the purpose of that agenda item. A confirmation is a confirmation. If you have questions about an individual, that's one thing, but to then question the whole process of the Airport Commission, that was wrong, that was the wrong step to make. But we've had a great working relationship in the past with the past few mayors in getting approval. We've set that precedent, I think it's important to keep that precedent. And again, this particular commission under MGL was created by this section of MGL which includes this language, and I think we should follow all of the language in that section of MGL, so.
Council Bona?
Yes. As for MGL, there are things that we don't always follow with MGL. MGL will refer things, and often, we don't always adopt them. You know, there are many things that MGL will recommend that just don't fit our community, it just don't fit our, you know, our landscape here, so we may not approve everything when just because MGL says this is the best option. We know there are some things that we already have in our ordinance because of MGL we would like to change, such as having to advertise in a newspaper, you know? And that's the state saying, you need to advertise in a local newspaper when we don't have one, and that costs us thousands and thousands of dollars. So, you know, we don't always want to agree with MGL just because it's MGL. And the mayor is correct and incorrect in saying ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the recommendations that come from the mayor get accepted. I can't recall one in all the years that I have served that the council has rejected from four administrations that I have served under. Maybe? I'm trying to think, it seems like they would stand out. I do know there was a close one, and it wasn't the council, it was from public opinion when it came to a housing authority appointment, but the council did support that at the end, and the council actually supported it all along, it was more public opinion. Again, we get names in front of us, we are not the one interviewing, we are not the ones who are getting the resumes, and nor do I want, that's not our job, to me, that's not our job. These commission and boards are almost like staff, you know, when it comes to the city, and we don't hire the staff. So, you know, the city clerk is, the city clerk's office is what's under our authority. So, I don't feel it's necessary that we have to be saying yes or no to these appointments when we're pretty much saying yes anyway, and we're getting very little information. You know, these are volunteers, most of them, and for us to have to be vetting them and putting through an additional process with discussing them at a public meeting, I just don't feel that that's necessary. Thank you.
Council Blackmer?
I take a little bit, with your phrase, their staff. The Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Licensing Board, the Board of Health, a bunch of the commissions actually have federal and state statutes that they have to follow, doesn't, so they're not really... And the Airport Commission, they have all of these other rules and regulations, they're not the historical society, they're not some committee. They have, they answer to almost a higher power, and I hate, I don't mean it that way, but like there's EPA laws that the CONCOM has to deal with that supersedes some of the things that mayor, not this mayor, but some mayor may want to say, I'm not going to appoint you because you're not going to do what I want. I'm appointing you, but you have to, I don't want to see that. And I don't, I don't really think that their staff... I do think they have a lot of staff roles because there's a lot of things that go through them, but I also think we have to keep in mind that they actually have guidelines and things that they have to follow regardless of what city or town they happen to serve in.
Hey, any further comments? Mayor Maxi?
So, Counsel Bona, just to go back to my percentages, I think under my administration, you've supported all of my appointments, but they're overall. But there have been some no votes, there have been some abstentions, that kind of thing. That's where I was going with my ninety-nine point nine percent. And the other thing, the topic on hand is the Airport Commission, and don't quiz me on my dates, but in nineteen forty-four, the Airport Commission was created. The MGL that you referenced, I believe, was put forth in sixty-six or sixty-five or sixty-seven in that area. And Counselor Bard has chimed in that because the charter supersedes that, that that's why we're in this position. I don't want to debate it any longer, folks, but it is what it is, and I think we all should move on from it. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, any further comments? We have Counsel Olewskowitz?
So, quick and not to be repetitive, I echo Counsel Bona's concerns that we have no way of, and he's right, we always say yes, we've, I've never said no, ever. But we come into these appointments not knowing anything, no background. We're given an agenda with a name. I mean, we, so that night, are we supposed to vet these people, which, like I said, we do not have the means to do so? So, that's the end of my comment, and I would like to make a motion if everyone is done with deliberation here.
No motions on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor now for, as, to publish to a second reading, publish as required by law to, and go to a second, passed to a second reading, as amended.
As amended.
Yep, as amended. Mayor, did you have any?
Just one quick comment. So, most of the applicants that come in, especially the new people, the new appointments, fill out a survey online, or they send me an email, or they're recommended by someone, and I usually have a telephone conversation, or I invite them in, and we get to know each other, we get a feel. I consider our boards and commissions an extension of my administration, an extension of government, and I think they serve a very important part. I just don't appoint people for the hell of it. I appoint people who are going to help us with the general purpose of moving the city along. So, I just wanted to say that. That they're not, you know, some people, yeah, we know, and we are, we pluck them off the street, but that's because they have a vested interest in their board or commission. And then, other people reach out to us, we use that survey all the time. And then, some just aren't quite, aren't a fit, or don't serve to fit in my administration. So, you know, we do do some screening, and, you know, nobody's ever really asked an in-depth question, but they are pre-screened. They're not just hired for the heck of it, or because you're my friend today. It is, can they really help this board and help move the issues of the city forward and show progress?
Counsel Shade?
Yeah, I just want to echo the mayor's words. I know specifically for the Idea Commission, the mayor and I have had many conversations about people joining that commission. I appreciate that the mayor does do her due diligence to look into people who are serving on commissions, and that, to me, has never been a question. I think most of the people who are on boards and commissions are very qualified, and again, these are all volunteers, these are members of our own community, they're members of the audience here tonight. These are people here in the city that want to serve in some form, and I think it's admirable and honorable for people to want to serve, especially in volunteer roles where the public does criticize you for being, for decisions that you make. So, again, I want to reiterate to all of our boards and commissions, thank you for being willing to serve, and thank you for volunteering your time and efforts to making our city better.
Okay, I want to say just one thing. I have served under two administrations, and I have full faith in the fact that these candidates for these boards and commissions were well-vetted before they came to the council meeting, or else we would never have seen their names on the, on the agenda. So, that's all I have to say. Counsel Bona?
Clarify this vote. A yes vote is to, the council will have a, require approval for the Airport Commission. A no vote would keep it as-is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to use, we'll do a roll call vote on this. Okay. Passed to a second reading and published as required by law as amended. This is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
She said yes. That, is that correct?
Correct, I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bona?
No.
Breen is not here. Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow's not here. Olewskowitz?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
No.
We have three a and four nay.
Okay. The ordinance will remain as amended.
As its?
No, no, the ordinance will remain...
As-is.
As-is. I'm sorry. Mayor, go ahead.
Attorney Bard, you're welcome to stay with us, or you can depart if you'd like, but you're welcome to stay. We're having so much fun tonight.
Indeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, members of the council, and I'll leave you and rest your business. Have a good evening.
Thank you for all the help.
Attorney Bard? Moving on, council paper number twelve thousand four sixty-one, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams. Chapter thirteen, Article Five, Section thirteen dash fifty-two, postponed from the meeting of January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, referred to the Public Safety Committee with a return date March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. This is on overnight parking, and I will provide an, let's go ahead and get a motion on this.
Moved to pass to a second reading and published as required by law?
Second.
Okay, Public Safety has not met on this particular topic yet?
Public Service has.
Public Service has, okay. It says Public Safety in here, is that incorrect?
Point of clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe I originally was proposing to have this go to Public Safety, and then Counsel Bona recommended it go to Public Services instead, so I believe that's where it was sent.
It went to Public Services, yes.
On February eighteenth.
I have a report.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Bona.
Okay. Public Service did meet on February eighteenth at five thirty. Two of the three members were present. It was about a fifty-minute meeting. Most of the discussion came from Commissioner Lascarbo and Chief Bailey. Their opinions are to keep it as-is. You have Chief Bailey here, if he does want to respond to anything different. But mainly, it comes down to that relying on when the first snow emergency happens or weather emergency happens doesn't prepare people enough to locate and find parking spaces prior. Chief Bailey did say that they really, this past year, didn't start enforcing it till almost two, three weeks into it, but they would sort of give people warnings. One of the issues they did have, though, is when they had, when snow did fall, and, you know, there are vehicles on the roads, it is time-consuming to try to find, you know, it's very difficult to have cars just towed away. Between getting the tow trucks there, it could take forty minutes to an hour minimum, and in the meantime, they, those vehicles could be tying up the street from being plowed. And so, they try their best first to try to locate where these residents may be, knocking on doors, and, you know, it's not always successful, and again, it takes up a lot of time. And, you know, again, they were saying, it's not always about snow either, it can be about freezing weather and ice and getting the sanders down. So, let's see. And that was really, you know, the bulk of the conversation here from them on this particular ordinance change. The only other thing I could say is, you know, we got into discussion of what is a snow emergency and everything, but that really doesn't pertain to this particular piece. So, the recommendation came from the committee to keep it as-is, really based on Commissioner Lascarbo and Chief Bailey's opinions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. Counsel Blackmer?
I just want to agree with, and I said this when this came before the council, the President's Day weekend storm, it was ridiculous. I mean, it was predicted for days, and the police, the police were trying to get cars out. Um... cars out, um, but also, we've had times where storms have come through, and yeah, okay, storm comes in October, I, that's an unusual thing, but when the ice and snow can start anywhere from the beginning of November, or maybe not do anything until February, because it's New England and there's climate change, um, I, I don't like the idea of waiting, because people aren't responsible, unfortunately. Um, I don't know how many times, in my street, there's six houses on it, it's a relatively narrow street, but my neighbors, historically, women have been bad in the last few years, but at one point, they always had their cars in the road, and they had enough room in their driveway for them, but it was more convenient to leave it in the road and not have to move cars around. And, and a storm would come in overnight, and they, the plow couldn't do what they had to do, and it's frustrating, because it's, these, these ordinances are for the public safety of everyone, and I understand people have parking issues in the city, and that's something that, that's a personal thing that you have to kind of deal with, um, you make choices on, you rent an apartment, does it come with parking? You buy a house, does it have enough parking? Does it have any parking? And I think the public safety of everyone, and including our officers and our plow drivers, um, is more, is, is the priority here.
Thank you. Councilor Shade?
Yes, thank you. Um, when it comes to, to, to this ordinance, you know, um, I, I'm not in favor of blanket bans in general. I think a blanket ban for something is not the way to approach things, I think. I appreciate the importance of having a notification for people to secure other parking, but I also want to say that it could be a public safety issue for someone to try to find parking at 1:00 or 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. in the pitch black, walking around, um, in, in neighborhoods to try to find a place to park, or to park at a lot far away from their house, and then have to walk home. If that's not a public safety issue, to me, that could be, that absolutely could be. Um, I also don't believe that taxpayers should be forced to pay for a parking space when the street is completely clean and available for parking, unless there's actual weather happening. So, uh, that is how I feel on the matter, the reason I brought this up was as a compromise to that belief, to at least, at the very least, make sure that people aren't being fined early in the season. I know the administration and the police were, were very kind not to enforce the, uh, the current language, uh, early on in the snow season in November, um, fines were not issued, warnings were issued, letting people know, hey, it's, you know, it's, it's that time, and I appreciate that very much, but that can change under any administration. So I think having a blanket ban there, if somebody wanted to be very strict about it, they could absolutely start fining you day one on November 1st, and we didn't get our first major snow winter event until mid-December, so you're talking six weeks of eligible parking that was available, and, you know, people didn't have access to that parking overnight. So, I, and a blanket ban just, to me, is, is not, it doesn't make sense to, to punish people when the roads are clear and available, and I understand the concerns about weather, which is why I said, um, in this, to, to start it upon the first emergency, the snow winter emergency, um, I also, the language is to move back the date from April 15th to April 1st. I, I, I think those are reasonable requests, um, for the public. It's not changing the ordinance in a significant way, because it still says there is a blanket ban from that first snow emergency all the way through. Um, so it's just shortening the time a little bit, and, and giving a little more leeway to make sure people aren't fined when there's no weather happening. And to me, that's, that's a really important thing for the community. Thank you.
Council Blackmer?
I guess, and I, you said this before, I, I disagree with the concept that the roads are for parking. The roads are for driving, and the parking is an added inconvenience where it's possible. I don't think it's, like, a taxpayer's right. I, I disagree with that concept, so. Um, also, we've had years where, last year, first day we canceled schools was, um, April 4th. This year, we, uh, December 5th, we canceled schools, so that was early to mid, I mean, in there, I, because that's, those are the dates that stick in my head, is when the first snow came, um, or ice, depends on what it was. I, I guess I've just seen, and maybe coming from the public safety side, I, I've just seen so many irresponsible people, and, and I've heard people complain. I swear, when, we get more complaints about parking, for a long time, that was the biggest complaint I got, and I, you've got, we've got, like the mayor said, we've got some really narrow streets where it, there's barely enough for the, uh, smaller plows have to go down on without cars on the road, so I just get concerned.
Council Bona?
Yeah, I do want to mention also, uh, Councilor Fitch did ask during the meeting, you know, what are some of the, you know, neighboring communities doing, and, um, it's not something you can always compare apples to apples. Adams did try this, um, it failed, um, they tried to only have a ban when the weather was bad, and again, vehicles did not move, uh, plow hit a vehicle, became a liability. Um, Adams probably is more like us than, let's say, Pittsfield. Pittsfield has wider streets, they have a lot of double-sided parking streets, they switched to sort of an every other, uh, night of which sides you can park on, um, but they also have a bigger population, again, wider streets, we have a lot of curvy, very narrow, and even many dead-end streets that are difficult even, uh, when there's parking just to get a truck down that's not even plowing. Um, you know, one thought was, initially while we were discussing this, is, well, we do allow the mayor, the mayor can say on April 1st, the parking ban's done, so it doesn't, that is in the, in the ordinance, so if, if the mayor's looking at the weather, and it's April 1st, and it just shows 10 days of 70-degree weather, you know, that's the option that they can do. Um, we could have almost taken that same option at the beginning, but I think the important part at the beginning, when you say November 1st, it lets the residents know, by November 1st, you should have a available, an alternative spot ready, um, and then there should be no excuses. You know November 1st, that is the date, not like, oh, I got time, you know, the mayor hasn't announced it yet. You know November 1st, somewhere, you may need to rent a spot, find a spot, it may be next door, it may be down the street, wherever, um, but you, you really aren't giving anyone any excuse versus them, you know, November 15th, or November 27th, the first snow falls, oh, I didn't have time, I didn't think about it, you know? So it's a discussion that comes up, and, you know, it is sort of, you know, one of these things, like, it seems ridiculous, we're parking off the street, but I get it, and New England weather is unpredictable, so, um, you know, and I think until we know none of our Novembers are going to be bringing snow anymore, I'm okay with it being November.
Okay, Councilor Shade?
Yeah, uh, I just want to reiterate, my proposal does not take away the parking ban, it doesn't eliminate it. It changes the dates, it makes it more flexible. That was the whole purpose of proposing it, I didn't want it completely eliminated, although I wouldn't support that, I didn't want to completely eliminate it because I understand the concerns that have been brought forth by the mayor, by other counselors here, in what you are saying, but I think a blanket ban with stringent dates doesn't make sense. We are in a world where the climate continues to change, where our winter weather has continued to push back and back, and further and further from where it used to be, and we should adapt to that, we should be more flexible with that, and that was the entire purpose of proposing this change, was to make more flexibility in the ordinance, a more permanent thing, rather than just at the discretion of one person. Um, in this case, the mayor still would have complete control and complete power to declare a snow emergency, and when that happens, whether it's snow or weather emergency, when it happens, the ban would then go into effect. So it just changes, it just, it, it's not eliminating the ban altogether, it's making it more flexible to make it easier for the members of the community.
Okay, anybody else? Mayor?
I just, of course, have to put my two cents in. Um, you know, we really try to make it workable for the community, like I said, we're pretty lenient between November and the time we see a storm coming, and it's a joke in my house, I watch the weather probably three times a day, and I'm always checking my app, and we certainly are, are courteous and cautious about, um, when spring is coming. You know, today, beautiful day, tomorrow may not be, but we, we do look at that, we do talk about weather, if not weekly, almost daily, between October 15th and April 15th. So, you know, to be courteous, we are being courteous, but unfortunately, I have to protect my public services department, my police department, who can't be moving cars all the time, and that's what we do, and we do it now, even with the parameters we have. I can't imagine what our dispatch center would be calling in plates if we were a little looser with that. So I appreciate and applaud your efforts to look out for the constituents, but we are doing the same as well.
Thank you. Okay, to reiterate, a yes vote would change the ordinance, a no vote would keep it as it is. Any further comments? I have one last comment, I think the variability of our weather, it's unpredictable, I've seen snowstorms as late as the last week of April, and of course, we had a freak snowstorm on the first, uh, first week of October, but, uh, so, I think that we need, people need a set time so that they can arrange to get parking spaces, because you know what's gonna happen, if the mayor announces a snow ban, and at the last minute, everybody's trying to find a parking space, it's gonna be chaos. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Council Wilkinson, did you have anything to add?
No, I think we've.
Okay.
Beat this to death enough.
All right. So, all in favor?
They want a roll call.
We can do a roll call, we can do a roll call, yes.
Blackmer?
No.
Couldn't hear you.
No.
Bona?
No.
No.
Alaskowitz?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
No. Motion fails. Okay, moving on to new business, council paper number 12,474, communication number 97 from Mayor Maxi, announcing appointments to various boards and/or commissions. Mayor, would you?
Great, thank you, everyone, my favorite topic. I'm pleased to announce that I have appointed the following people to the boards and/or commissions listed below. William Ziv, I'm gonna say it wrong, help me. Zivatsky, who's in the audience tonight, will be replacing Andrew Fitch on the zoning board, Rebecca Chiquette is a reappointment on Windsor Lake, Jenny Dunning, James Holmes, and Chad Zazik is a, are all reappointments on Windsor Lake. I thank all of these individuals for volunteering to serve and help move North Adams forward, and we welcome Willian to the Boards and Commission family. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council paper number 12,475, communication number 98 from Mayor Jennifer Maxi, requesting authorization to execute the purchase and sales agreement with Mass Moca for the Sullivan School property. I will file the communication without objection, uh, would you like to read that into the record, please?
Sure, actually, I have an abbreviated, you want me to read the communication in?
Read the communication, please.
Sure. Um, also, before I get started, joining us tonight is attorney Lee Smith, who helps us with our real estate transactions, he is online tonight to answer questions that you may have, or to direct us either way. So dear honorable council members, enclosed with this communication is an order authorizing me to execute the purchase and sale agreement with Mass Moca for the sale of Sullivan School. This agreement has been negotiated between the parties over the past several months. Because of the time it took to negotiate this agreement was longer than expected, I am requesting that the council approve this agreement tonight, so that Mass Moca can do its due diligence period now. The sooner we begin, the closer we will be to a beneficial reuse of this property, as well as additional residential development, which could also benefit the city for increasing our tax base. Key points in this agreement are that the buyer has 120 days due diligence period, which commences upon execution of the purchase and sale. Buyer has the right to terminate the agreement if, in its sole judgment, information from due diligence activities warrants it. The city has agreed to resolve access prior to closing, and the buyer has the right to waive this provision prior to closing. If access issues are not resolved or waived, the buyer may terminate the agreement. The city is granted a right of first refusal in the event that the buyer wishes to sell the property. So as you consider tonight, I just want you to think about how we need to develop the former Sullivan property. I'd like everyone to keep in mind the following things. We often hear some concern, sometimes frankly, too much, about disposing this property for less than it's assessed. I think that I, more than anyone, would love to be able to sell this property for its true value, but unfortunately, despite the best efforts of three administrations, that hasn't been in our cards for us. The city has advertised this property no fewer than nine times since 2016, over a period of nine years. Five of those procurements generated no offers on the property. The other four proposals received in 17, 19, and 2021 were rejected by the city council at the time. Those offers ranged from a dollar to 187,000. So I just want to first respond to the idea that we can do better, or even should be getting 2 million for the property. Those days are gone, and we see by the procurement track record, it's not realistic. And in the cost of the city to carry this property, including insurance, vandalism, which is a reoccurring problem and unnecessary expense to our taxpayers, the neighborhood is dealing with a vacant, deteriorating property, and when we met with the community at a lovely meeting at our friend's house on Kemp Avenue November, that's what we heard a lot, they were concerned about what was happening to the property as far as, uh, infrequent or frequent travelers that occupied the building, fires, vandalism, drug sales, and now that we've discovered pedophile meetups. So now, let me know, let me tell you about some positive aspects of this property. One, it's a beloved school. One, it's a beloved part of the Kemp Ave property. Moca is committed to approve, improve it, they are committed in developing a taxable residential property as part of their proposed, proposed use of the school. Any increase, any increase on our tax ba, base is important. Approving the sale will address a current blight in vandalism issue, and it will also hopefully improve our property values. In addition, it benefits our citizens to include establishment of a community living environment, as well as develop the trails and green space surrounding the building. There will be performance and rehearsal spaces for music and other forms of art. The school building will have a permanent artist housing component, as well as temporary residence for artists in the form of live workspaces similar to what we see at the Eclipse Mill. The city has partnered with Moca on several initiatives, including the Route 2 overpass, the Bike Path Study, and the Huzick Revivalization. Mass Moca is a different creature than what we know today. They want to be part of the community, and we look forward to continuing this partnership to benefit all of the residents. Mass Moca is committed to revitalize this vacant and troublesome property. They are committed to add residential housing and taxable real estate to the city rules. They are committed to create and improve green space and recreation trails. They want to establish a community living room for engagement of all the residents in North Adams with the arts. Mass Moca wants to bring more music to the city with teaching, rehearsal, and performance spaces, and they also want to continue to help us to move North Adams forward to become a cultural-enriched community where engagement is most important. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the order. Council paper number 12,475, an order authorizing the execution of the purchase and sales agreement with Mass Moca for the Sullivan School property located at 151 Kemp Avenue, further identified on Assessor's Map 169 Lot 1, and, uh, I will read the order into the record. Ordered, whereas, the City of North Adams, by city council order dated February 14th, 2027, 2017, I'm sorry, declared the property at 151 Kemp Avenue and further identified as Assessor's Map 169 Lot 1, to be no longer needed for municipal purposes, and to be available for disposition, and, whereas, the mayor of the City of North Adams, acting pursuant to the city council order, issued a request for proposals, an RFP pursuant to the provisions, Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B, to sell the property, and, whereas, Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art, Mass Moca, for the principal place of business in North Adams, Mass, submitted a qualified proposal in the amount of $50,000 to purchase the property, and, whereas, the proposed redevelopment of the property will add artist residency and workspace, community spaces, and additional units of housing, and it is consonant with the Vision 2030 comprehensive plan. Now, therefore, it is ordered that the City of North Adams, that the North Adams City Council authorizes the mayor of the City of North Adams to sell the above-referenced property to Mass Moca for $50,000, and further authorizes the mayor of the City of North Adams to execute the attached purchased and, purchase and sales agreement. Do we have a motion? Counselor Leskowitz?
I'd like to make a motion to send this to finance, and we, this has been out for quite some time, I think it might be wise on our part to look. I think it might be wise on our part to look right into this rather than jump right into it tonight. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to move this to the Finance Committee. Any discussion, Counsel Blackmer?
I have some questions, I don't know if they should wait for the committee meeting.
Probably so.
I have the same questions, I'll wait to committee.
Okay, Counsel Fitch.
Question the contract itself.
I'm not sure that this does need to go to the Finance Committee. I'd love to hear the perspective of the Finance Committee Chair about that, though.
Counsel Shade.
Yeah, um, if we're asking questions about the financials and the particulars of the contract, I think the Financial Committee is probably the best suited for the review of that, so.
Okay, Counsel Blackmer?
Yeah, I would say finance or community development, but since this involves procurement and, I mean, I know some of the questions I have are about housing and, but they're also about taxes. So, I think that finance, it can sit in finance because technically, even, even if it's housing, my questions are about housing and procurement, so procurement comes under finance, so I would leave it under finance.
Counsel Aluskowitz.
I just want to clarify, no disrespect whatsoever to the administration, I just feel that we were just handed this tonight, and I think that
You weren't just handed it tonight, you were sent in your packet.
It was sent in a packet, but for us to convene and talk about it would be not within the realms of the law, so I believe it should go to committee and have things ironed out, that's all.
Counsel Blackmer?
Um, yes, this proposal, but the RFP was not included in the packet.
The response is to the RFP was, and if anybody had requested that before this morning, you would have got it over the weekend.
I know, but either way, this has been, I, I know, I'm, I, but I am not a fan of, this has been on the table, the RFP went out on the 15th of May. The deadline was, I forget, sometime like 17th or 20th of, 26th of June. Every time we've asked about it, yep, we're working on it, we're working on it. So, you've worked on it, now we want to do our due diligence and have our meeting and have discussions, and you can, hopefully, you and, you probably, and maybe Mr. Nivalli or whoever was involved in assessing it, if they could be there, that would be really helpful, but I'm not gonna hurt, this is not gonna be a case of, this needs to be done now because it, we got it. We've had it for four days, but it's not like we've had it for weeks.
Okay, let me take Counsel Wilkinson.
Through the Chair, the Mayor. Everybody likes to get everything done yesterday when they've worked real hard, I understand that. You seem to have a real need tonight to have this passed tonight. What is your need to pass it tonight?
Our need is, it's now spring, we'd like to have Mass Moca start their due diligence process, due diligence process. And at the end of that, this deal could fall apart. They could get into the due diligence and it could fall apart. So if we don't start sooner rather than later. But we also need another piece of this, and it's called Act 97, to cross the, the park and to get through the land access, because there's a portion of this requirement that requires an easement. And we need to go through that whole process, but we can't really start it until we have a signed purchase and sale. I'm happy with it going to finance, but I want to walk away tonight with a date. I'd like to do that. I don't have a problem bringing in, but the purpose of tonight really isn't to quiz us on the RFP proposal while I'll entertain and, and be fine with that. Your job is to authorize the purchase and sale, not to really quiz us on the, the RFP process. Because we did have two respondents, and a committee reviewed it, and they decided that Mass Moca was the most advantageous. And from that, we will enter into an agreement if the City Council approves it. If you don't, that's okay. I have no problem with it going to committee. We can invite the Moca folks in, we can invite the community development folks in, our procurement officer, I have no problem with that, but I just don't want it to go three months.
Doesn't have
Counsel Wilkinson.
Doesn't have to go three months, the Finance Committee, this could come back in two weeks, like you just suggested. This is the first thing, other than reading that there's an issue in the purchase and sale agreement, it was a long document, I read it, you know I do that for a loan, so I didn't have a problem with it. There was issues about easement, easement, easement. We don't know anything about an easement, this is the first we're hearing of this.
Yeah, so, that's, excuse me.
And you don't have an executed purchase and sale agreement here. You have a mock-up purchase and sale agreement. What guarantees do we have that the one you sign is gonna be identical to the one that you offer to us tonight?
Two, two parts, may I?
Pardon me, two parts?
Can I answer your question?
You can, please do.
So the purchase and sale must be approved by the legislative branch. It will, is in the form that is agreed to by the parties. The document certainly won't be changed, we will record it at the registry of deeds, and you can check word for word. We, we don't put forth anything that requires major modifications.
What about a minor modification?
Then we would come back.
If you guarantee that, that's fine.
Because we certainly
I don't go into, in any real estate
We're getting into a little back and forth.
Okay, but I just want to say one more thing.
That's good.
I don't get into any real estate deal unless I have an executed purchase and sale.
But I can execute it without your permission.
Okay, I think we've established that. Counselor Shade.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward, this proposal forward. I think there are a lot of us with a lot of different questions, and I do think we need to do our due diligence. I'm glad to have this go to, to the Finance Committee for us to meet and do that. I invite anyone who's a part of this process to be at that meeting. I would like to request that the person who made the motion to send it to Finance have a, a return date added, please, to the motion.
As you being Chair of Finance, would you like to offer up a return date?
Um, I will offer up a return date of the next City Council meeting.
March 25th.
March 25th.
Okay, any more discussion, Counsel Fitch?
Yes, that, my concern was also expediency, you know, it's my opinion that we have all the facts in front of us here, we have all the people in the room to answer questions right now. I'm comfortable having this discussion right now and moving forward right now, but I will also respect this motion and vote in favor of it if that's what everybody else would like to do.
Okay, Counsel Shade, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I think it's important for this to get a committee to also allow for more public, for, for, for more, uh, the ability for the public to weigh in as well, which I think is important to hear from. Not that the public's just going to vote on this and decide, but I think it's important to hear from our constituents when we ask these questions and get these answers out there, for, for the, for the public to have the ability to hear the answers to those questions, to, to have the time to process and review. I, I think that's an important part of this process, so.
Okay, Counsel Blackmer, then I'll ask the Mayor.
I just, I want to clarify, I have no questions with the procurement process, that was all filed and legal. My question is, and my comments will be, and my concerns have been all along, is I felt like we should have had a vision of what we wanted to do with this, like idea, at least some idea, that we want housing, honestly, I think we need housing. And I say mixed-use housing, so, or mixed-income housing. And then we shop the RFP to people who do that, and, and that, I'm, my question is, I don't think that happened here. And two, there was no, there was nothing in the RFP saying that's what we wanted, it was an open RFP, come in, you can, you know, whatever your thoughts and dreams are. And, and I guess, I feel like it's been out there so many times that it should have been more focused, and that's my issue with the procurement, not, not with anything with the procurement legally, but more of an approach, I guess, is what I, that's, I wanted to clarify that, I didn't want, no, 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 I wouldn't accuse you of doing it wrong, it's fine. I read it.
Mayor, did you want to respond?
Yeah, two things. One, again, Attorney Lee Smith is online, and he was invited here to answer questions that you had, so we could have public discussion. The, the second part was that on, um, November 9th, I think it was, we had a community meeting, community meeting, people who bought the property, people who live on the surrounding streets of the property, I think there were like 40 or 50 of us on, at Doug and Michael's house, the former Galloport property. We had a beautiful, um, meeting, and Moca talked about what they wanted to do, what their vision was, why they wanted to do it, and a lot of the questions were, well, what was it gonna look like, what's, what is, what is the feel, how many trees are you gonna take down, are we still gonna have access to, um, the trails, and, um, you know, we're concerned about the vandalism, we're concerned about the transient traffic. And we walked away, correct me if I'm wrong, Morgan, feeling really great in that we solicited some information, but we still couldn't answer all of the questions because we haven't done our due diligence. And one of the reasons why it took so long to get to this point is we've been trying to work out, you know, some things. Now, if you remember years ago, going back to Counsel Blackmer's comment about a housing development, and I will fully disclose, I lived on Kemp Avenue at the time, the neighborhood went crazy when there was a proposal to put in another housing development. Now granted, this is housing, but it's kind of a mixed, toned-down than another Brayton Hill, or another high-rise, or another Greylock Apartments, or Sperry Avenue Apartments. This is kind of a combination in a supervised living environment, um, where people have the ability, especially artists, to really buy property and have permanent housing instead of apartment surfing, et cetera. So we, we did try to address the housing component, but if I came forward with a proposal for another Brayton Hill or Sperry Avenue, that neighborhood would probably come after me with pitchforks. So the administration were very sensitive to reviewing these proposals and felt that it was a good fit, not only for the community at large, but for that neighborhood. I, I personally, if I owned property that butted Sullivan School, which I did at one point, and watched two fires in that building smoke, I, I wouldn't want that in my backyard. But I've got to sell the property, it's a liability to us. And if we, again, I don't want to be at the end of my fifth term, say, and still have the property in our hands. So I have no problem whatsoever going to finance, and I appreciate the return date so quickly, but we've done all of our homework, we have Attorney Lee Smith here to answer questions, and we're all ready. So we either do it tonight, or we do it at finance. But I just ask you, as colleagues, let's not go. And I understand, Lee, so you're, Counsel Blackmer, you're concerned, we've been working on it, we've been working on it. We've been working on it so we present you a document, so there is no changes, Counselor Wilkinson, so that we're pretty set on all of our bullet points. But we can't define and say to the community at large, this is what it's gonna look like, that we have a vision. And that, this project will be completely vetted through zoning, through planning, through conservation if needed. And, you know, and I'm sure, knowing Moca, and also I will push them, we'll have more community meetings. But we've alre, we already kind of got ahead of ourselves with the first community meeting in the sense that the RFP was posted on Facebook, which prompted the community that is mostly affected to ask a lot of questions, and we wanted to address that. So there's no conspiracy theory here, folks. We, 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 we've been working on this, and I'm sorry if it's been kind of held tight, it's been held tight for that reason, that we wanted to present you with a document that was 100 percent. So that's my soapbox.
Counsel Bona?
Uh, yes. As mentioned, um, I know some of us, we sat on council in the past when we have rejected the bids on Sullivan School, clearly not apples to apples. Um, you know, I, I can recall, one was, I think our concern was the finances of the, the bidder, like how are they going to fund it and, and move forward? And then the other, as the Mayor mentioned, we actually had a fair amount of the neighborhood come in and concerned about the size of the housing project that was gonna go in there, which was substantially bigger than this, and a different nature. Um, so, you know, that one was clearly with the people, the first one, I think, was our sense of, of the finances. I'd also like to remind the council, I could be wrong, but when the council approved the sale of the Notre Dame Church and School, I don't believe it went to Finance Committee, but it, it may have, but I don't remember, um, that kind of discussion at the time. I have been concerned with how long this has taken, um, obviously, myself and I think Counsel Fitch have asked numerous times of the status, and it did seem like, as I say, there was one piece that was holding it up. That being said, if I look at the reasons the past ones were rejected, I don't see those as issues here. Um, I'm actually very pleased, I know some of the rumors out there that, oh, Moca buys it, you know, we're not gonna get taxes or anything, and this is, uh, we're gonna get taxes. And, um, you know, it's not as bad when you have a nonprofit property that stays nonprofit, but we see a lot of nonprofits, or we see a lot of commercial properties that end up turning nonprofit, and we lose it off the tax roll. We will actually be doing a reverse here, which is something you, you haven't seen often in, in this city. You know, you've seen far more commercial and residential properties go nonprofit versus the other way around, so this will put additional taxes. I think, you know, myself, I feel confident, um, in that Mass Moca would follow through with what they're doing, it's not someone from the outside, we don't know, it's not someone that is saying, I don't know where I'm gonna get my finances from. So, I have no problem with it going to committee, it, you know, it can move quick. As is, I would have supported this tonight, but, um, I do feel for the counselors who want it to go to committee, that is a fair request, so.
Okay, Counsel Shade.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to all the community partners and the administration for putting this together. I'm in favor of getting rid of property off of our, off of our payroll that does not collect taxes and getting it back into tax circulation, I think that's really important. We have several properties on the city books that we don't use, that we don't collect taxes for, that we have to pay for maintenance for, and getting those sold and into the right hands so that they can collect taxes is a wonderful, wonderful thing. That being said, I do think that it's a good idea to summon this community to committee for more questioning, to give us more time to review the proposal. We've only had it for a few days, I think it's, it's good to have a little more time. I'm very glad that we can send it to committee for review, to, to get more questions answered. And again, I do believe the turnaround time for one meeting should be okay with all parties involved. So I would push to make sure that we get that Finance Committee in, I will work with the Mayor and her team and our other counselors on the Finance Committee to make sure we can schedule a meeting in time, and we will take it from there.
Okay, any other counselors? Mayor?
I just kind of want to go back in time a little bit. In February 14th, 2017, the council declared this property surplus property and authorized its disposal because it's declared that it's no longer needed for municipal purposes. And with that, you ordered that the Mayor of the City of North Adams, acting on behalf of the City Council, and is hereby authorized to dispose of the property pursuant to Chapter 30B. Check, we've done that. And to include executing a purchase and sales agreement for the property, subject to the final approval of the Honorable Body. So here we are tonight, we're finally at that stage. Again, no problem going to committee with a quick return date, I appreciate that. But that's what I'm, we're here to review the purchase and sales. Just want to clarify that.
Okay, any other counselors? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to refer to the Finance Committee with a return date of the next meeting.
3:25, 25.
Okay, it'd be, uh, March 25th. Any further comments? And we're gonna go with a roll call on this one.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Aluskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,476, Communication Number 99.
Excuse me. Counselor, um, Attorney Smith, thank you for being with us tonight, I'm sorry we didn't call upon you, but we will be in touch when our Finance Committee is scheduled.
He'll send you the bill.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on, Council Paper Number 12,476, Communication Number 99 for Mayor Maxey, Recommending Revisions to Ordinances Regarding City Council Approval of Appointments to Commission on Disabilities, Human Services Commission, IDEA Commission, Oklahoma Park Rent Control Commission, Youth Commission, Public Arts Commission, and the Mass Moca Cultural Development Commission. I'm gonna file the communication without objection, Mayor?
So basically, this is just aligning, um, our ordinances with, to reflect what the charter says. So as we move forward, as administrations change, as counselors change, we don't revisit that. It's at the council's discretion to refer it to any committee you'd like, I just want to move on from it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Council Paper Number 12,476, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams. Chapter 2, Articles 26, Human Services Commission, 29, North Adams Commission on Disabilities, 33, North Adams Youth Commission, 36, I'm sorry with the Roman numerals, I'm not great at Roman numerals, 36, North Adams IDEA Commission, 34, North Adams Public Arts Commission, Chapter 26, Mobile Home Park Rent Control Board, and Chapter 28, Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art Development Commission, Section 28-2, Appointment Terms and Vacancies. Do we have a motion?
Motion to send the general government with a return date of, what is where we at? End of, end of April? Second meeting of April?
So we have a motion to send it to general government, the second meeting of April. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one opposed. Council Shade. Second. And that was the second meeting of April, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me? We didn't have any discussion?
We did have.
When we took a vote, we didn't have.
I thought.
Got a motion and a second?
Got a motion and a second, I was waiting for a discussion.
Yeah.
Council Shade?
Yeah. I just wanted to say I appreciate the effort from the administration to change these ordinances. I know some of these boards and commissions, the language, especially the IDEA Commission, the language is selected very carefully, and all of these ordinances were approved for these commissions by both city council and mayor. So I don't know that we actually need to make any changes, but that can be discussed during, during the general government committee meeting.
Okay, Council Blackmer?
I'd also like to add that I was on the council, and I was on probably general government through some of these. The IDEA Commission, the Youth Commission, for the IDEA Youth and Public Arts Commission, all of them were reviewed by the city solicitor at the time. That might be, it was probably somebody different, so, but they didn't see a problem with it. So I just want to put that out there, in case I can't make it to the general government meeting.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Council Paper Number 12,477, Communication Number 100 from Mayor Maxey, presenting a home rule petition. Wait a minute. Yeah, no, okay, we're not skipping anything. Yeah, Communication Number 100 from Mayor Maxey, presenting a home rule petition to authorize the appointment retired North Adams police officers as special police officers until the age of 70. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak on this, please?
Certainly, thank you, President Sapienza. So before us tonight is an act authorizing the City of North Adams to appoint retired police officers as special police officers up to the age of 70. They currently max out at 65. By approving this act through a majority vote of the city council, you will authorize me, as mayor, to petition the state legislation to file special legislation to support this initiative. These special police officers primarily assist with traffic control during construction projects by managing the safe flow of cars and pedestrian traffic. However, we would like to increase them, some of their duties, and help us during emergency situations and large events. Our members of the department, whether full-time or part-time, are going to be sworn officers in granted full police powers, who possess the authority to make full arrests and distinguish and help us with citizens. While serving in this capacity, these individuals will identify criminal offenders, criminal activity as such, reduce the opportunities for commission of crime, aid individuals who are in danger, facilitate the movement of traffic, identify problems that potentially are serious law enforcement or governmental problems, create and maintain a feeling of security, and promote and preserve peace. These special police officers will have the same standards as our current police officers. So basically, we're kind of in a catch-22 here. Our current police force, believe it or not, a lot of the newer people do not like to do traffic details. We've been working on the backs of our retired police officers who are very close to aging out. We have a serious problem coming up with all of the major projects that we have in the pipeline, and we also consider this a little bit of a revenue generating activity as the city receives 10% of the details that are worked by our employees. We are hopeful that we can be successful with the state legislation. There are about 17 other communities who have done this home rule petition and been successful. Just to give you some numbers, in fiscal year '24, our salaries, this includes full and part-time, for just outside detail equated to $386,000. And we collected about $32,000 in admin fees for that. So our hope is to have our own people working details. I know over the summer, I got several calls and complaints even from some of you in this room, about officers who didn't know our streets, officers who weren't paying attention, and nine times out of 10, they were officers from another police department, or they were officers from another division that were hired because we couldn't fill our slot with our own people. So this ensures that we have about six or seven, I call them extras, to help us with traffic. And I'll just use this one example. Not too long ago, we had a, I believe it was called, classified as an armed robbery at Walmart. We had a North Adams retired police officer working on the bridge, who heard that we were in a high-speed chase, and they were working on the West Package Bridge job. And that individual directed, which I will just say is former Chief Casalio, the crane operator, to put the crane across the bridge, so the car could not get by. Luckily, we didn't have to pursue that far, and we were able to apprehend the person on West Main Street. But that is someone who is connected to us. That is someone who knows what it means to have activity going on in the city, and able to protect us even more. We were very fortunate, no one got hurt that day, but if we had proceeded further down State Road to the West Package vicinity, no one was going to get by retired Chief Casalio. And we, you know, the reality is, we want our own people. And I joke a little bit about the 10%, but the 10% helps us. The 10% helps us. So the gist of it really is just changing the age from 65 to 70. But we have a tremendous amount of jobs coming up, and why not fill them with our own people who know our community, know our frequent flyers, know our people, know our traffic flows, know our bus routes, et cetera. So that's it. In an abbreviated word, Chief Bailey is here tonight to speak, as well as retired Chief Casalio, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the order?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. So we moved on to the order, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Council Bona?
Through the chair, either to the mayor or the chief. Does the pay differ depending on, you know, what they, what their positions and salaries were before?
No, the outside detail rate for police officers is a flat fee of, I believe it's $54 an hour.
Okay. And you said, what, it was about a half a dozen that would probably be sworn in?
About six or seven.
What's that?
Six or seven.
Okay. And I think that was it?
Thank you.
Okay, Council Shade?
Yes, thank you. Why is there, through the chair to the mayor, do you know why there's an age limit to begin with? Because to me, if somebody's physically capable of doing the job, age shouldn't matter.
So interestingly enough, I agree with you, and especially with the new post standards, but there is a state law that says that police officers can't work past the age of 65, local police officers. I believe that there's no limit for state troopers, which is an interesting concept.
Okay. With that, would it be appropriate to request on this position to remove the age limit entirely?
I think the post standard does cap it at 70.
The state caps it for police officers, for full-time police officers.
You have to speak to the microphone.
Turn the microphone, please.
Yeah, so, so based on the MGL 321, or the, the Chapter 415 of the Act of 1987, basically, that's what caps it, capped it at age of 60. It's been litigated that it's age discrimination over and over and over again, and they failed in that. So they just capped it for police and fire, 65, you're done. It's incumbent upon the city or any municipality to do a home rule petition to raise it up to 70. There was a, there was a bill that was in the House this past January of 2023, that was started in Deerfield, and that was put on hold this past December to raise it to 72. So there was plans on raising it to 72. It's just most municipalities that have done this already have capped it at 70. So we're just following the same suit as Kingston, Methuen, Springfield, and Braintree. That's the reason why we're just putting it to 70. And just to get a little inside baseball as well, they train with us already, the officers that are, that are out there, up until, the retired officers up until 65. They wear our body cameras on the streets as well. None of that was paid for, that was all paid for by a grant. So I know, because I shoot with them, I train with them, we go through use of force tactics, we go through less lethal. Everything that we train for with our full-time agency, we train with the retired as well. So I know personally whether or not they're physically fit, if they're able to do the job every year, annually. So that leaves it, this petition would leave it upon me to say whether or not that officer is still fit up until the age of 70. They also follow our post standards, they're, they're in the post database. So if there's a complaint from the community, they can go on the website and file against that specific officer, which comes back to me, which comes back to the city. They also train through our Catus portal, so they go through every single training that we have as officers. Like I said, they train that, that way as well, which is about eight to 12 classes that they have to take, sometimes two hours a class, six hours a class. And they, like I said, they accomplish this the same way as any full-time officer, it's just they're retired, they don't have to work the 40 hours that we have to work.
Thank you.
Hey, Council Blackmer, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to respond to the mayor's comment about the state police, because it was set with, I think it had to go back when all the police officers were, when they merged the state police with three other organizations, they never, it was actually the state police retirement was 50. And then when Governor, yes.
Remember that.
So do I. And then Governor Weld merged the Capitol Police, the Registry Police, the MBTE, I don't know, the cops down east, and the state police, and because there were so many different contracts, they never came up with a wage. They do have to recertify physically every two years. And also, I want to bring up the fact that I'm not a fan of a lot of this, but, and this is, people talk about the flagger bill, why are we paying cops and not flaggers? The prevailing wage rate for the flaggers is the same that we're paying our police officers, but that company then charges the city another admin fee. What did you say, it was 20, $25?
Charges the company.
The company charges us.
No, no, it's all through, it's a separate entity for flagging.
But who has to pay it?
The, so if rising hires, you rise and hire, he was saying.
Right. But if, if it's a project, like a bridge project, which is going to be a city or state or federal project, that gets charged to, it reduces the amount of money that's available for gravel.
If it's a city project.
If it's a city project, right? So, okay, so, so they're making that, plus they're making it a higher administrative fee than what the city's charging kind of itself. So I, I know, because, and the reason I'm addressing this is because I've heard about it, why can't we pay our flaggers somebody $25 an hour who needs a job? Well, we can't, because prevailing wage says you can't, so that's where that's at.
Council Fitch?
This sounds like a good idea to me, I'm ready to vote for it.
Okay, Council Alaskowitz?
I feel the same, I'm very comfortable moving forward with this tonight. We've all probably seen in the past, with some of the flaggers, we've seen Project MCLA last year, where the flaggers just had traffic totally awry. I'm happy to see our former police chief and officers out there willing to kick in. And I know, I believe it's next year, we're looking into the future here, we have a major mass stop project on Ashland Street, if I'm not mistaken. So we do see major influx of Berkshire County sheriffs, they're out here doing it, not our own guys, and we would like to see our own guys doing it.
Or gals.
We see our retired, or gals, true, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But to see our retirees out there willing to pitch in, I'm more than happy to see it, and I'm grateful and say thank you, and I'm very happy to support this tonight.
Go ahead, Chief.
Just to say one more thing, too, just, it's not just road details, they help us out with transport, too. So they have the ability to bring prisoners to, to the Berkshire County House of Correction, which doesn't tie up our officers from the street. If we have to bring, you recognize that we can't bring men, we can only bring the men down to Berkshire House of Correction, we have to bring the female prisoners to Chicopee, it's a long drive. They can help us out with that, if they, if they're willing to come in and work, they're not on detail rate, they have that special police officer rate that they, that they get paid. And in the past, they've helped out with the haunted house this past year that we had, they were, they were helping us out on that as well. They helped us out with the parade, I'm sorry, the parade, the plays as well.
Fourth of July.
Yeah, so it's, it's not just out on the roads, they're helping us out internally as well.
Just, Council Shade?
Thank you. I want to say that I support this, I would support it even more if it removed the age limit altogether, because as long as you have the ability to work, you should be able to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Alaskowitz, I'm good, thank you. Thank you for your extra added information, Chief. Any further discussion? Would former Chief Casalio, would you like to speak on anything of this, or are you all set?
We're going to vote for it, so don't worry about it.
I just want to take a moment and say thank you, thank you everyone for your support, Mayor Maxey, the chief, I'm hoping our city council, and our general public, thank you very much. We are still the eyes and ears of this community, we're happy to help out. We have a good understanding, spending our entire career, Chief Moranti, Lieutenant Baker, myself, and the other officers. We know the people in our community, and we like our community, we do, we've loved here our whole lives, and we want to continue to support it. And I just want to say thank you for your support also.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote. Any further discussion before we go into vote?
No.
Okay, roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Sapienza?
Yes. Motion passes, okay, moving on.
Thank you all.
Council Paper Number 12,478, Communication Number 101 for Mayor Maxey, requesting time to recognize Women's History Month and announce this year's award recipient of the Women's Leadership Hall of Fame. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor?
Proclamation declaring March 2025 as Women's History Month, whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of North Adams and the nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home, and whereas women have particularly been important in establishing early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our city and across the country, and whereas women have served as leaders at the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, and also whereas have worked tirelessly to support industrial labor, civil rights, and peaceful movements to create a fair and just society for all. Now therefore, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in the City of North Adams, with a theme of moving forward together. I encourage our residents to join in the observation of participating programs, ceremonies, and please thank our fellow city councilwomen serving today for your role. So thank you. So with that, real quickly, in the past, I've invited the recipients to come, but we come to the council, and because of this year- Um, but we come to the council. And because of this year's recipient, I gave the award at another meeting. So this year, I'm honored to induct Superintendent Dr. Barbara Melkus to Mayor Maxey's Women History Hall of Fame. Barbara has been a true testament to a community leader for stewardship and volunteer work within the city and beyond. Barbara has been the recipient of Against the Tide Award from the Massachusetts Breast Cancer Coalition, Changing Lives After Fifty-Five from the Northern Berkshire YMCA, recipient of the Mass Presidents Award for Outstanding Contribution in Education, the Unson Hero Award from the Berkshire Eagle for caring during the pandemic. She served as the superintendent of the Massachusetts Committee as President, and most notably was awarded Superintendent of the Year by the AS, AASA. Upon her retirement, I find it most fitting to honor her and induct her into our Hall of Fame, my Hall of Fame, our Hall of Fame, for her unwavering commitment to education and our great community. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Paper number twelve thousand four seven-nine, Communication from President Sapienza and Mayor Maxey, Presenting a Resolution for Full Support of the Health Incentives Programs. I will file the communication without objection, and I will read the communication into the record. And this is dated March fifth, twenty twenty-three, a resolution calling for full support of the health incentives program sponsored by the City of North Adams, Council President Sapienza, and Mayor Jennifer Maxey. HIP serves as a critical tool for nutritional well-being and in the fight against food insecurity and hunger, which is pronounced among low-income residents in North Adams and the Commonwealth, including children, family, seniors, and people with disabilities and chronic illnesses. Okay. Council Paper number twelve thousand four seventy-nine, A Resolution from President Sapienza, Mayor Maxey, for full support of the Health Incentives Program to be fully funded. And I will read the order into the record, read the resolution into the record, excuse me. And this is upon the recommendation of President Sapienza, Mayor Maxey, calling for the full support of the Healthy Incentives Program, HIP, whereas in Massachusetts, the Healthy Incentives Program automatically applies to anyone who reserves, receives SNAP, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program benefits and allows them to receive limited reimbursement when they purchase locally grown fruits and vegetables. And whereas on December first, twenty twenty-four, the Department of Transitional Assistance cut HIP monthly benefits by at least fifty percent to twenty dollars per household, per month, regardless of household size, from a variable forty dollars to eighty dollars based on household size. And whereas HIP serves as a critical tool for nutritional well-being and in the fight against food insecurity and hunger, which is pronounced among low-income residents of North Adams and the Commonwealth, including children, families, seniors, and people with disabilities and chronic illness. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, nearly two hundred thousand households in the Commonwealth received benefits from HIP through an increase in their access to healthy local farm foods. And nearly three hundred Massachusetts farmers increased their income through HIP sales. And whereas HIP serves to decrease the estimated two point four billion dollars in avoidable costs related to food insecurity and hunger in Massachusetts by increasing access to healthy foods. And whereas a result, as a result of this cut to HIP funding, families across Massachusetts are reporting increased food insecurity. And whereas vendors at the North Adams Farmers Market and farm stands rely on sales that they receive with the support of families like SNAP and HIP to sustain themselves. And since the cut to HIP began, farmers across Massachusetts have reported a sixty percent drop in HIP sales, compelling them to lay off staff and change their business plans to adjust for lower sales. And whereas HIP participation is up nineteen percent as compared to last year, and the need for state and local governments to support the residents' nutritional security is likely to increase if federal support dries up. And whereas the City of North Adams recognizes its duty to advocate on behalf of our constituents, grappling with food and nutritional insecurity who rely on these critical state-funded programs. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City of North Adams calls upon Mass Governor Moore Healy, Mass Senate President Karen Spilka, Mass Speaker of the House Ron Marino, the Mass Senate Committee on Means and Ways to Support an Additional Ten Million Dollars in a supplemental budget to fully fund the Healthy Incentives Program and to ensure food and nutritional security for the people of the Commonwealth, to allocate twenty-five million dollars to fully fund HIP in the coming fiscal year's budget and to support passage of Senate Bill SD eight twenty-nine, an act relative to an agricultural, healthy incentives program to make HIP a permanent program. Be it further resolved that the city clerk of the North Adams City Council forward a copy of this resolution to each of the individuals in offices named above, as well as to First Berkshire District Representative John Barrett, State Senator Paul Mark, and to local food assistance and farming system organizations such as the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, the L. Nelson Friendship Center, and the Berkshire Food Project. In council, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Signed, President Sapienza and Mayor Maxey. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilor Shade.
Yes, I think this is incredible to propose. Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for bringing this resolution forward at a time right now where federal subsidies are being cut off for farmers. This is a way, on a state level, we can support our local farms, help them get access to more money, while also, uh, increasing access to healthy foods for community members. Uh, so this is a win-win for everybody, and I support it one hundred percent. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? And this is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Oh, hi, yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Council Paper number twelve thousand four eighty, A Communication from Councilor Fitch, Requesting Time to Discuss Water Safety and Quality in the City of North Adams. I will file the communication without objection. Councilor Fitch.
Yes, thank you. Several of our residents and concerned residents and concerned people around this region as well have approached me in recent months, um, just asking questions about our water quality, about our protection practices, and raising concerns that they don't have the information they need to, you know, to make assessments of the state of our water. What I am hoping to do is to provide a communication to our residents and to our whole area here that is affected by our water. Um, what are our practices? You know, how, how do we face challenges when they arise? Uh, what's the long-term look like for our water processes? So that is my hope in referring this to the administration with a, with a due date back of the first meeting in May, um, to ideally have a presentation.
Second.
A motion? I suppose I put a motion in there.
That is, I, I, motion and a second? Okay. Uh, any discussion? Councilor Shade.
Yes, um, thank you for bringing this forward. I think there's a lot of misinformation and confusion out in the public. So I think having some kind of, uh, information session like this could be extremely helpful so that people understand what the process is and how safe their water is. So, thank you for bringing it forward. And through the chair to the mayor. Um, my, my question would be, um, I guess there's only one question. Are there any reason, is there any reason to believe that the water that we have, the drinking water accessible to the public now is unsafe?
No.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Just real quick, um, Councilor Fitch, um, I was hoping you would add that you and I and Commissioner Oscarbo have already met with President Sapienza to talk about bringing some of, um, the people who have questions in and chatting, and also putting together a presentation that would talk more about our water. Um, we are very fortunate to have Commissioner Oscarbo, who, his whole background is in water. And I think you maybe were a little bit surprised at how in-depth his resume was. Um, so we're looking forward to sharing that. Um, but our water system is monitored by the DEP, DEP and EPA. Um, and, you know, we don't really have any grave concerns, but there are people who don't have all the information. And we want to make sure we get the right information out to those people. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council Paper number twelve thousand four eighty-one, A Communication from Councilor Fitch, Requesting Time to Discuss the Establishment of an Affordable Housing Trust for the City of North Adams. I'm gonna file the communication without objection. Councilor Fitch.
Yeah, thank you. Um, also, I'm just so sorry that this is the last agenda item on a very lengthy agenda. I hate that it is, but I still think it's important to talk about this and to take a little bit of time to do so. An affordable housing trust. So what is this? What I'm doing right now, and, and all the councilors and the mayor have this packet in front of them, this is available on the Berkshire Regional Planning website. If you're interested in looking it up, it's called the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, so you'll see kind of a two-page document. A quick summary, and I won't read the whole thing. A municipal affordable housing trust can help create and preserve affordable housing by directing funds to locally approved projects or programs. So what does affordable mean? Um, it is my understanding that some members of our community and all communities maybe think that affordable housing is like a dirty term in some way. I completely disagree. I think when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about preserving the ability for us to live here in the long run, and to develop housing, more housing, that is affordable for the residents of North Adams, so all of us. Um, what I think an affordable housing trust can do is to collect a committee, a commission essentially, together of people appointed likely by the administration, the mayor, um, to oversee funds and even perhaps apply for grants to collect more funds, or fundraise on their own to collect funds, and then decide how those funds are distributed to encourage affordable housing projects and programs. Um, a couple additional things that I've learned through just my basic research of this process is that a housing trust, several, several of them exist in the, in Massachusetts. About a third or over a third of Massachusetts communities already have an affordable housing trust. So this is not some new creation. This is just something else that we can do as well. Um, at least, and I'm not sure if there are more yet or not, but at least Williamstown, Pittsfield, Lennox, and Great Barrington here in the Berkshires have affordable housing trusts of their own. Um, several different kinds of programs can come up within housing trusts. These can look like things, and these, these are examples from the Berkshires, by the way, things like down payment assistance for first-time home buyers, for example. Um, that's something that I believe Great Barrington offers. Um, their, Great Barrington also has a pilot program right now through their Affordable Housing Trust to stimulate ADU development. ADU development, meaning accessible dwelling units, AKA in-law apartments essentially, so that, and I'm just making up a name here, Diane Preatore can fix up a little bit of her house and be able to rent it out to generate some additional income while providing additional housing at the same time. That's the kind of program that this entity could also support and help stimulate. Great Barrington is offering a zero percent interest loan in order to help stimulate the development of ADUs in their community. Housing fix-up programs, this is something that North Adams has offered in the past. This is something that other communities have offered. This is something that an affordable housing trust can help do on their own outside of the administration, which has many other things to prioritize right now, which is also understandable. Also enabling and stimulating developers to add affordable units to their developments, to their future developments. This is something that is oftentimes challenging. Um, me, myself, and redeveloping my house and putting a lot of money into my house, it's, it's hard to not have to think about, you know, if I am to rent this out in the future, I have to charge a lot of rent to recoup my costs here. And so to be able to find, provide a stimulus for developers so that they can actually afford an affordable unit instead of one that is jacked up like crazy because they've put so much money into their development, this is something else that an affordable housing trust can also help with, and many more other potential opportunities. Um, so this is also something, by the way, that was recommended as a potential option in our, um, Housing Needs Assessment, which I believe was completed in twenty nineteen. So there are just all kinds of alignments here. Um, I don't have legislation in front of you right now, intentionally, by the way. What we did is we chatted about this in our Community Development Committee meeting last week, I want to say it was, or two weeks ago. Um, what I'm hoping to do is to refer this to the administration, as, you know, Mayor Maxey and I have chatted behind the scenes about this as well, um, refer this to the administration for investigation. Ideally, we will also have a conversation with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, which I believe helps communities establish these trusts. And I would love to propose legislation at a future council meeting. So what I'd love to do with this right now is, of course, field questions after we make a motion here. But, um, I think it's okay that I make a motion to refer this to the administration with a due date of the first meeting in April, which I believe is April eighth.
Second, but I think the timeline's, it might be a little tight.
Can we do it, like, in the end of May?
So here's my hesitation with that. I mean, yes, anything is possible, of course, and as long as this is done, that's the only thing that I'm married to. Exactly. What I was really hoping for is to start the process of getting this set up so that we can, during the budget process, talk about what would funding sources look like, and so that we could have that conversation then.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to postpone to...
I, I had proposed the first meeting of, of April.
All right.
But, but to refer to the administration with a return date of the first meeting of April.
Okay. So we have motions on the first date of April. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any comments? Councilor Blackmer?
Could we kind of start a conversation or something so that we can at least have an update, even if you can't do a lot of the work on it? I know you're working on the budget. I get it.
We're working on a lot of projects. How can we compromise in the second meeting in April?
Accepted. I am, I amend my motion for a return date of the second meeting of April.
Okay.
Second.
So we have an amended motion to return the second, uh, meeting of April. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. So let's vote on the amendment.
One fifty.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Close? It's like, okay.
Now we have to vote, because we should have just withdrawn it and redone it. But now we have to vote on the whole thing as amended.
Okay, vote on the, uh, motion as amended.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passed. Councilor Shade?
I was raising my hand to ask a question.
Okay.
For discussion, because we didn't have a discussion.
Okay.
So if we could, um, I just wanted to, uh, bring forward and say thank you, Councilor Fitch, for bringing this forward. I think this is an excellent idea. We are seriously lacking available housing of all types in this community. So any way that we can get new housing, we should investigate and do our due diligence for. So thank you, Councilor Fitch. Thank you, Mayor Maxey and the administration who's gonna be working on this. Uh, it's a great idea to help with the housing shortage that we have.
Okay, any further comments? Okay. Moving on, committee reports in minutes. Okay, and we have no licenses. And open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. A name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Lillian Zawinski, four four one Eastman Street, North Adams. So I want to touch on a couple of things in, in two minutes, of course. Um, so regarding the Sullivan School Project, so Berkshire Blueprint is a report on the economic status of the Berkshire County. And this is old numbers, but in twenty nineteen, the average wage for someone in manufacturing was seventy-two thousand dollars. The average wage for someone in the arts was thirty thousand. And then for tourism and hospitality was twenty-seven thousand. And we saw when mass mocha workers in our community went on strike, they were asking for higher wages. So I think me, like a lot of people in this community, is skeptical as to how much economic benefit arts can ultimately bring us. And, um, I think tourism might have a little bit more of a shot to kind of be a robust economic driver in Berkshire County. Um, but I'm skeptical about that. I do think that, um, so I live in the Kemp Park neighborhood. I was at that neighborhood meeting. I think the project is fine. I mean, it, fifty thousand dollars, we get it into the city, that property goes on the tax rolls, the neighbors like it. This project doesn't have to be the project that addresses, like, our housing needs. I think it's fine. Um, I also want to say, like, there are a lot of people in the neighborhood that aren't against affordable housing. There are just a lot of loud voices that may have come through a lot louder in twenty twenty-one, but that's a whole other thing. Um, I also want to say that I, I am skeptical, like, the housing that would be built in, on Sullivan School, it's not gonna be affordable to the arts workers making thirty thousand dollars. Um, and I, to Council Blackmer's point, And to Counselor Blackmore's point, I think for the property the city does own, we need, like, this is our vision, this is what we want, marketing, like, that's how we actually make something happen that we want to happen. And then finally, I want to say that I'm strongly in favor of the Affordable Housing Trust. I think that it's going to be really important if we can find a reliable, dependable source of funding for that, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Tom Bernard, 20 Elder Avenue. So last summer, as was reported in iBerkshire's, this council heard a report from the mayor about an individual appointed to serve in the capacity of, quote, "special assistant" to the mayor. Subsequent media reports, including an article in the Berkshire Eagle on December 6, 2024, noted that the special assistant spoke for the city during at least one meeting of the airport commission. A February 19, 2025 iBerkshire's article noted that the individual participated in the February 18, 2025 General Government Committee meeting regarding, among other topics, appointment authority at the airport. Now, these media references raise several questions, ones I hope the honorable council might motivate yourselves to explore. First, where is the position of special assistant to the mayor listed in the current classification plan? Where is it reflected in the budget approved by the council in June 2024? What are the duties and responsibilities of the position? What is the compensation for this role? Does it include supervisory responsibility, and if so, of what staff members? And what subprovision does this role receive? Is this position subject to a contract, and if so, under what relevant and allowable provision of MGL Chapter 41 is this contract governed? And finally, if it's accurate, as has been reported in the local press, that members of the airport commission felt, quote, "pressure coming from city officials to influence their decisions while on the commission," close quote, then what role, if any, did the special assistant play in exerting this perceived pressure on airport commission members? And in doing so, were they acting on their own initiative or at someone else's direction? Now, I don't presume to tell the council how to do this job, but I do ask you to explore these questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Malazo, 91 Wheeler Ave, Clarksburg, Massachusetts. So what stuck out to me was you have a different attorney for land than you do for everything else within the city. There's a company called Anderson and Krieger that all they do is represent airports throughout the state of Massachusetts. Your own airport manager went to a meeting with all the rest of the managers. When this law firm heard what was going on in this city, they said unequivocally, what you're doing is illegal. The mayor is not allowed to just appoint people and run with it. Why wouldn't you hire a specialist in the airport, running of airport, as an attorney to ask that question instead of running with Joe Bard where you have a special person for your land? With that said, I think Counselor Bona said they should put a "For Sale" sign on it. Great, I'll throw my name in that hat to buy that. Put it out there to bid, I'll bid on it, and we'll do something like the Sullivan School. I'll show you how to run an airport. Let's see. At some point, the state and/or the federal government will come in here, and it's going to cost the taxpayers of this city money because of the way you're doing what you're doing at the airport. After that happens, I would hope you would look at how you appoint your people and how this commission or this committee actually votes on who you put on those airport commissions. I think you should put something, a process into play that all administrations have to follow, provide a resume. They're spending taxpayer dollars without anyone else's input within the city. It shouldn't be just what the mayor wants. You shouldn't just put somebody on there because she wants them. It should be because you can trust them to do the right thing for the taxpayers of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further people for open forum?
Hi, my name is Jen Barber. I'm here representing Mountain Grove Farm tonight. I want to thank each of you that voted to apply a resolution for the Healthy Incentive Program, or H I P, as the only authorized farm in North Adams to accept and contracted with the Healthy Incentive Program. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about how it actually affects the residents of North Adams. Back in December, the funding was cut by the governor, not the DTA, but by the governor and our legislative branch, to reduce people's benefits from 25 to 75%. That is a drastic cut for the amount of people in our city that reside, depend on food assistance programming. It is sad for the seniors in this community, who that $40 a month makes a difference between making the end of their food budget or not. I'm saddened that it wasn't 100% vote in here this evening to pass through that resolution, but I do want to applaud those of you that did. Again, as the only farm authorized in North Adams, we also hope that the administration and the city council work more diligently with the programs offered in accepting local farms, which is only Mountain Grove Farm, to be out in the community providing this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So my name is Dan McCray. I live on Eagle Street here in North Adams, and still not loud enough. I'll try a little, I'm a bit louder yet. Okay. So as you probably recognize, me as having been working with a group called Save Notch Forest, and I wish to offer a belated thank you to Mayor Maxi for canceling the logging plan last December. I understood, if I read your public statement that was in the newspapers and on the city website correctly, that you had mixed feelings about that. You yourself thought perhaps it was a good plan, but you responded to your constituents and offered to include the public in any future forest management planning, whether with an open space recreation plan or through other means. So I would like to state that we are ready and willing to work with you and we have been researching possibilities for both protection and funding of the forest, which, as watershed forest, is intimately connected to the livability of this town. If you don't have clear water, protected water, you don't, affordable housing is much less worthwhile, less livable. So anyway, we're here, we're eager to help. Please do let us know when.
Thank you. Last call for open forum. Okay, moving on. Mayor's updates. Mayor Maxi?
Sure. I'll be real quick. The Department of Revenue has started their revow for 2026. They will be in the community this week. So if you see a car in front of your house, specifically a white Jeep Grand Cherokee, that is just the Department of Revenue. We, they will be here this week, and if it has to continue into next week, we'll let people know. But don't be alarmed if you see a white Jeep Cherokee parked in front of your house taking notes. 99.9% of the time is the Department of Revenue. Also, we just want to remind everyone that we are hosting pre-K and kindergarten screenings for the upcoming year, the week of March 26. Please go on NAP's website to register and find out more information. I also like to extend the invitation not only to the city council, but the public at large, that we will be having a community engagement event on Saturday, April 5, from 10 to noon, hosted by Stas, who's working on the Route to Overpass Reconnecting Communities program. This event referred to as a community visioning session will take place at the BIC at Mass Moca. We invite the community to join the project team for a presentation and to share their thoughts and questions as we navigate through this grant process. Thank you.
Mayor, what time was that on Saturday?
10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. We're going to send out a save the date to all of you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, liaison updates, counselor updates. Moving on. City clerk updates. No clerk updates. Correspondence? Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, certainly. I received an email from our Economic Development Consultant for the City of North Adams about the Discover North Adams survey, and I asked him if he'd be willing to let me share it here in council tonight, and he said, yes, absolutely, please do. So just a couple quick notes about this survey. This is a community-wide survey. To help us understand how to best focus our efforts, we're surveying residents to share what new businesses, activities, and changes they would like to see in North Adams. We want to make sure every resident has the opportunity to share their input, and we are trying to reach the widest possible audience. Our goal is to have at least 2,000 responses by May 2. So you can find the survey at discovernorthadams.com/survey. And thank you. And thank you to the mayor for stimulating this process. It's really exciting.
Okay, any further correspondence? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a...